Conference will now be recorded.
To order tonight, we have the List Center Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. Mr. Marty Snell will be presenting, and we do have all the Planning Commission present except for one. Is that correct? Actually, you know what, Clerk? Can we go ahead and do a roll call, please? I just like it on the record. Who is who's attending?
Councilmember Fox.
Oh, she's absent. Excuse. Sorry.
Councilmember Cathburg.
He is running behind.
Councilmember Boyle.
Present.
Councilmember Leah.
Present.
Councilmember Servini.
Present.
Mayor Strobin.
Here. Thank you, Clerk. All right. Okay, so we do have the WSP presentation. Mr. Marty Snell over here presenting this is for the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. Marty, this is all yours. And actually, how we'd like to run it tonight, Council and Commissioners is that to go through the presentation, hold your questions till after Marty's gone through it, and then we'll go back through where you guys want to talk about. All right? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, my name is Marty Snell. I work for the consulting firm WSP. I have Alec Agarola joining me. He's going to run through some of the slides that we have on the slide deck this evening. So without much more, I'll get into what the agenda looks like for this evening. Next slide, please. So we want to review with the City Council Planning Commission the community engagement and visioning efforts that have been underway since late 2023 for the List Center Comprehensive Plan update. We'll walk through some draft comprehensive plan elements or chapters, some changes to the List Center Municipal Code Title 18, which is your development code. When we get toward the end of the slide deck, we have some things to talk about relative to the Clark County's draft environmental impact statement and the agricultural resource lands study that was recently issued November 4. So following those slides, we'll get to next steps and ask for council direction from for the staff. So I'm going to have Alec walk through a couple of these slides, and I'll be jumping in on a couple of them myself, but Alec, you're available? He's three hours ahead of us.
Yeah, can you hear me? Okay?
Don't tell me he's in someplace warm.
No.
No. No more warm. Um, thank you, Marty. Forgive me in advance. I have a bit of a horse froggy throat today. But if you go to the next slide, I'll go over engagement for the comprehensive planning process for the center. The city provided information to and requested feedback from agencies, organizations, and residents during the comp plan review and update process. Stakeholders were asked to identify preferred and nonpreferred growth areas to help shape preliminary land use concepts while also reviewing the current elements of the comprehensive plan and those goals and policies. Public participation and communication were emphasized as key components in selecting and implementing the preferred land use alternative and the comprehensive plan elements, goals, and policies. And then, as you see here on the slide, this is the array of different community engagements that were performed throughout the comprehensive planning process, starting the end of 2023 and running through most of this year. And so that's two open houses, five tabling sessions, various webpage updates on the city's website. As there's a dedicated page for the Comprehensive Plan Update, several fact sheets were handed out throughout these events, and then workshops as joint workshops between the Council and Planning Commission, and also many, many Planning Commission workshops and City Council workshops on all these topics. So it's been a very extensive engagement process, and this engagement was used to establish the vision of the center's future and inform the alternatives. If you go to the next slide, um, while this engagement was going on, there's been background reports that have been completed throughout this process. There's the Clark County vacant buildable lands model, which was the basis of the land use alternative. And then the Clark County 2045 growth allocations that were assigned to all of its cities, including the center for population, housing, and jobs. And then the center had its own housing needs analysis and strategy performed, looking at current housing trends in the center, and then how to accommodate housing in the future, especially for those different income bands per new GMA requirements. And then there's a very various capital facility plans with utilities, transportation, and parks and open space. So essentially, these reports are used to provide the ground truth and data-driven foundation for the land use alternative. Next slide, please. So the next several slides will be the various land use and housing elements and other elements of the comprehensive plan with associated code updates. Again, none of these should be new to the Planning Commissioner City Council, but we just wanted to provide a brief overview of each, as this has been a huge piecemeal approach, and just showing how this is all coming together. So just again, providing a quick overview of each. So for the land use element, we updated the element to have the latest city demographics and refining the goals and policies for the preferred land use alternative and projected growth and infrastructure needs and housing and climate requirements. And then per new GMA, we updated code around impact fee deferrals for affordable housing, clear and objective design standards, and some short plot requirements. Next slide, please. Um, this is the preferred land use alternative that was selected by the City Council just over a year ago. And this is looking at the city as a whole. As you see, there are numbers on here with areas three and four. These are areas in the city that were selected to be upzoned from low density residential to medium density residential to accommodate for the lower income needs of housing as allocated by the county. And then you see out by the junction, there's areas five and six. These are proposed expansions of the existing city's urban growth area. And so area five would be expansion with a mixed use, about a 50/50 split between residential and commercial use. And then area six is purely commercial, looking more like a light industrial employment uses. And then also this considered the downtown and Timon Landing Suburban Plans that were adopted earlier this year. I think Marty had a couple of things to add to this slide.
So the areas that you'll see in five and six are those, those are the UGA expansion areas, ones north of the junction on the west, excuse me, on the east side of I-5. That's planned for mixed use. There's properties on in the southwest portion along I-5, south of a lot of the Callets tribal owned property. These areas are currently in the county's agricultural land designation, and it's something that we'll talk about when we get to the ag land study as well. So just wanted to highlight those two UGA expansion areas for the council.
Thanks, Marty. Um, we'll go ahead and go to the next slide. So Chapter 2 is the transportation element, and this was updated for existing conditions with different facilities across the city, future conditions and needs due to the growing nature of the city and the allocations that were assigned to the city. So growth is coming to the center and have to plan for that. And then updated with the relevant goals and policies to accommodate future future growth and future needs. And this is also being updated with the ongoing update to the transportation capital facilities plans that will roll into this once that's fully completed. And then some code updates related to transportation per, again, GMA or state law are concurrency exclusions. Specifically, it's only I-5 where they don't have to do concurrency concurrency requirements. And then EV infrastructure, updating some definitions for EV infrastructure and allowing those in areas are strictly commercial areas. And then residential parking requirements that are for residential only uses, which are tandem parking and various parking standards. We'll go to the next slide. For the housing element, again, a lot of us was updated around the new GMA requirement where we have to consider income bands. So there's various income bands ranging between zero to 100% area median income and higher. And so you have to accommodate for different bands of income between that range. So you have your less than 80% and then above generally. And then updated elements, policies and code policies and goals around those topics. And then updated the code for housing-related items, which regard permanent supportive and transitional housing, emergency shelters and housing and co-living. And again, these are all required by the Growth Management Act. Next slide, please. So capital facilities and utilities, this is a pretty extensive element in the comprehensive plan. And this was updated for existing conditions and future needs of various public facilities and services. Those are like water, sewer, stormwater, fire, police, libraries, schools, and telecommun- telecommunications providers like Century Link. And so we updated those to capture the current facilities and the future needs for all of these facilities. And then there's a piece of code we updated related to this, which is essential public facilities. And essentially, those are facilities are prone to be more difficult to cite, like airports, state educational facilities, and regional transportation facilities. These aren't planned currently in the center, but the GMA requires you to have some regulations about these uses if they're to ever come to your jurisdiction. Next slide, please. Chapter 5 Economic Development. This one was pretty straightforward. We just updated statistics about jobs in the center and where people work and where they go to work. And then updated policies around that. And we updated some goals and policies incentivizing economic development at the junction and the recently adopted subarea plans. Next slide, please. Chapter 6 Parks Recreation and Open Space. Last year, the city adopted an update to its Parks Plan or their 2024 Pro's Parks Recreation Open Space Plan. So essentially, we just updated this element to be consistent with that Parks Plan that was adopted last year. Next slide. So these are minor elements or optional elements per the Growth Management Act, chapters seven through 10. That's Historic, Archaeological, and Cultural Preservation, Chapter 7, Chapter 8, Urban Growth and Annexation, Chapter 9, Environment, and Chapter 10, Government. Essentially, these were updated to be consistent with the rest of the comp plan. Specifically, specifically, the environment element was updated per latest state requirements for critical areas and updated goals and policies around endangered species, stormwater, shorelines, air quality, and water quality. And then a pretty large component of that is updating the critical areas ordinance itself for the center. And I'll go into that a bit in the next slide. So go into the next slide, please. Um, so just hitting this at a high level, again, this is required by the state per GMA. We updated several definitions for critical areas in the center, and those are your geo hazards, which are like landslide and seismic hazards, wetlands, fish and wildlife habitat areas, and then also updated some language around state agency guidance and regulations. So coming from WDFW and ecology. And then we updated the designations and buffers for critical aquifer recharge areas or karas, we call for short. And the image on the right is a wellhead protection area in the center, and that's a type of kara. And then we also updated for geo hazards, Oregon White Oaks, repairing areas, and wetlands. Next slide, please. Again, on the critical areas ordinance, we did a lot of mitigation updates per latest ecology or wetland or WDFW guidelines for Oregon White Oaks repairing areas and wetlands. And then updating requirements for critical area reports, again, for pretty much most critical areas you see in the city. And then next slide, this is the last bit of my spiel here. Part of this periodic update cycle, the GMA added a new element that's required for all jurisdictions, which is climate resilience element, and that's Chapter 11 here in the List Center Comprehensive Plan. It includes a climate hazard and risk assessment, identifies key assets and resiliency goals and policies to reduce or mitigate impacts to residents, property, services, and key assets from climate hazards. So if you go to the next slide, this has been presented in the past, but essentially, we identified with grant funding from Commerce, different hazards in the center. So for example, extreme heat. And this is a high risk for the center versus drought, which here is considered a low hazard for the center. And then we used this assessment to inform policies and goals, which are shown on the next slide. And on here, overall goal for climate in the center is that the city shall enhance community preparedness, response, and recovery efforts that build resilience to the impacts of wildfires, floods, and other hazards worsened by global climate change. And then essentially, we have these 12 different categories that we have goals and policies to support this overall goal. So those that could be ag and food systems, transportation, hazard mitigation, and so forth. And that concludes my portion. I'll hand it off to Marty back to the room.
Thank you, Alec. The next slide here touches a little bit on the draft environmental impact statement, which the county issued on October 1. That EIS has been out and available for public review and comment. There's a deadline for comments to be submitted November 30, which happens to be Sunday following Thanksgiving. So I think most agencies and cities are commenting on Wednesday before Thanksgiving. The EIS takes a look at three alternatives. There's a no action alternative under the county, which essentially means that there's no changes to urban growth boundaries. There are changes based on new state requirements under the housing elements and climate, climate resiliency and greenhouse gas emissions. And there's going to be maybe some upzones in certain parts of unincorporated Clark County. Alternative 2 is an alternative that expands some of the boundaries around some of the cities to accommodate various land uses, including mixed use and employment. And alternative 3 is the, it's the alternative 2 plus site-specific requests that came in from landowners around the county. So those are the three alternatives that they're looking at. The county will consider comments received. I would imagine that they'll take most of December to review all of the comments on the draft EIS. And they'll begin formulating a preferred alternative, which won't be available until sometime in early 2026, likely February, March. The second piece to this slide is that the Clark County has an agricultural resource study that was issued on Election Day, strangely enough. In that report, which is close to 200 pages, there are findings by the consultant that they hired. There are a number of criteria for designating or de-designating agricultural land. And there's what are called WAC criteria, which is Washington Administrative Code, which is kind of the state law around agricultural lands. There are two main criteria, and then a third that has 11 subcomponents, which can be characterized as the long-term commercial significance criteria. The, the study and the consultant found that there are two main criteria, which are the not characterized by urban growth criteria and the lands that are currently used for agricultural production or can be capable of being used for agricultural production. Those are the two that they centered on. And then of the 11 criteria that are under the long-term commercial significance factor, they looked at soils, tax status, and predominant parcel size. And there are eight others that were not considered. To give you a sense of what those might look like, they are proximity to urban growth areas, land use settlement patterns, and their compatibility with agricultural practices, intensity of land use nearby, a history of land development permission permits issued nearby, land values under all other alternatives, and proximity to markets. The report did throw in an optional criteria, which is about food security. Again, the, the, the study really looks at tax soils, tax status, and predominant parcel sizes as the kind of primary criteria by which they will review agricultural lands in the final evaluation of, of their preferred land use. The county has reached out to cities to talk about what the implications of this ag study might be on land use alternatives, presuming that there's no UGA expansions around any of the current urban growth boundaries. Next slide, please. This is a little messy, and there's a better handout at the back of the room that has it's in a table format. Again, this is, this is some of the, the criteria that, that has been considered. Again, it's land not already characterized by urban growth, tax status, predominant parcel size, and then the optional number four under food security. So the other criteria are under the consultant's findings will not be recommended. Now, there is some time for the county council to review this. I believe that they're asking the agricultural advisory advisory committee that they've established to, to review this report and to provide some commentary and/or recommendations on the criteria found in the study. Next slide. So overall, the next steps for the city here is to review and revise elements and, and code and codes per comments. We're kind of holding those out for adoption. Staff will provide comment on the draft EIS with emphasis on the city's preferred land use alternative and assumptions. The ag land study is complete, as I mentioned, November 4. And currently, the schedule from the county is that toward the end of March 2026, the county will finalize the EIS and move forward through Planning Commission and County Council workshops hearings in April, May. I think they have a June anticipated adoption date. Next slide. So what we're looking for in terms of Playing Commission Council Direction on next steps is really regarding the preferred land use scenario. Continue forward with that scenario, which is the scenario C. Identify an alternative scenario, assuming that the county does not expand onto the urban, the industrial urban reserve, which is currently agricultural land. And there's discussion about whether there's a reallocation of jobs elsewhere in the entire of Clark County, whether that's the city of Vancouver or Clark County UGA or wherever, but it's there's some discussion about reallocating jobs and housing where they can't be accommodated within current boundaries. And that's all that I had for presentation for the council.
Thank you, Marty. Appreciate it. Thank you, Alec. Thank you for joining us three hours ahead or three hours later. We do appreciate it. Okay, Council Commission, do you guys understand what was just presented to you? The AG study came back and said, no go. They based it off of three factors out of the, is it 11? Wasn't 11? And they're supposed to take all 11 into account. They're saying that the lands that are up there are still good for agricultural growth or, or use, even though we know different. There are properties up there that we've been looking at and going after that have had oil spills and all sorts of stuff on them that they cannot be used for growing vegetables or shouldn't be until they're cleaned up. The county had three open houses, one in Ridgefield, two in Battleground. I attended the two in Battleground. The first one I attended was all of the friends of Clark County. There was nobody else that attended it besides Angie and myself and Myrna. Yeah, Myrna. Oh, Lou and Margine. That's right. Sorry, Lou, I'm not leaving you out, but it was very biased and lopsided. So when I walked in, I found the boards that were presented by the actual group. I think it's Echo, isn't it Echo Star or something? Echo? Echo Northwest. There was nothing in there except for farmland material. And that was it. There was nothing in there talking about anybody's ideas. There was nothing in there talking about the lands that are not currently actually being used for agriculture, but are designated it. There was nothing talking about urban, urbanization that's around it and surrounding it, like the Costco or the Tribe. Nothing like that. There was nothing in there that talked about urban reserve, which the lands that we're going after were actually designated in 1994 for this purpose. And the biggest point they, they also brought up was there was no water, water rights being discussed whatsoever. So it looked at that time very bleak when I walked in, and it showed me that this decision was already made two meetings prior or two open houses prior. The third open house that I attended, we actually came with full force. I believe anyways. We had a lot of people in the audience, and someone else had brought up water rights, and Counselor Marshall actually got upset and couldn't answer the questions and said she wasn't getting into it with this person and stormed off. So that tells you how these meetings went and kind of gives you an idea of where we sit. We are going to move forward with the arguments and the tours on the land because it's still up to the county council as a whole and a majority on this vote. So we're still going to try our best to make this happen. Marty, you want to join in on any of that conversation? Because you have a little bit more of that knowledge.
Sure.
I got the top portion.
Yeah, when, when the, when the consultant presented at the county council meeting, they, they walked through each of the criteria and those criteria that were not favorable to preserving agricultural land, they discounted those criteria. I will say to the mayor's point, the, one of the council members asked about these discretionary criteria. There are 11. And why are they not kind of looking at others? And I think there was some, some questions about, particularly in, in the center in Ridgefield, where you've got adjacent urban development. You've got the, the Callets property at the junction with a massive amount of infrastructure on both sides of I-5 with those, those new roundabouts, a new Paradise Point Parkway, or whatever you want to call it. And so you can't discount the fact that there's urban development nearby. In Ridgefield's case, of course, the question was, well, there's, there's a Costco, right, within a stone's throw of some of this property. So there was some discussion among the council about looking at this discretionary criteria and, and having a discussion with the full council about whether or not the study should consider those criteria in evaluating whether land is preserved as ag or de-designated for some other use. Interestingly enough, there's, I think the report off, off the top of my head says that I think there's over 130,000 acres of land, quote unquote, that could grow crops in Clark, in Clark County. That's the, the suitable for. Of that 32, 130,000, they've got 32,000 acres that are designated ag. The rest of it is in like R-5, R-10, R-20. There's a little bit of ag wildland, which is, I think, kind of, it's only in a couple of spots in Clark County, maybe the Refuge and the Vancouver Lake Lowlands. So it is, there's a lot of data that they, that they looked at. And when they, again, when they looked at criteria that was, was not favorable toward preserving the agricultural land, there was a, a kind of a discounting of those criteria. So I have not, I do not know when the next council work session would be to talk about the, the study. I know one member was gone or a couple of members were gone, so it remains to be seen how the the full discussion plays out. And I think that my, my sense is that, I don't know this for sure, but when they, they've asked the agricultural advisory committee to look at it. they've asked the agricultural advisory committee to look at it and weigh in, I imagine that there might be some presentation or something from the ag committee to the council and that would be an opportunity to hear in, listen in on what, what that conversation might, might be like, so.
This group, the survey or did the survey, the study, they spoke with the AG commission and then they spoke with the council. They did not speak with any of the landowners or any of the cities. So they took one side, one side only. And the councillor that I'm, what I keep bringing up is Sue Marshall because she represents these districts. And there seems to be a narrative there. You guys have any questions? I know Sean, you're wanting to.
Well, I mean, you brought up quite a bit, but I mean, just one simple thing. Do you have scenario C like at top of something that you could, just so we could.
There's a, there's a, there is a map in this, on the slide deck. It's, I think it's right after land use. Right there.
So scenario C was in those urban growth areas?
Yeah, number five.
Yeah.
And six, yeah.
And then four up there. What is, is that going to be rezoned?
I believe that's a, that's a rezone proposal, correct, yeah, along with number three.
That's MDR 16? Okay. And then that's the only rezoning that's happening though between three and four, correct?
I believe so.
And those are both going to MDR?
There's also some, I believe there's some code amendments that would allow like ADUs. That's one of the requirements under the a new law under growth management is to allow accessory dwelling units on all residential properties. So that's one other element of the comp plan update with code amendments. I will point out in number six, there is a property that's on the, on the east side of I-5. Actually, I believe that's actually R5, so you've got one piece of R5 out there that's not ag. R5 is Marty, R5 is residential. Rural, yeah, rural residential, five acre. So if you look at, if you look at kind of the, the blue, kind of the teal area that runs along I-5 and then just outside of that, you got a row of rectangular lots. Those are, I believe, five acre lots. And then further south, you get to the Tri Mountain Golf Course.
Also, so in, in our plan, I believe with those grayed out areas, north and south of that of the junction, basically, those are going to be deemed for medium and high and commercial.
Commercial.
I believe five would be mixed use, so it's like a 60% employment.
Yeah.
And 40% residential. And then six, I believe, is employment. It's light industrial.
Yeah.
So those are the, those are the plans.
If we don't, or if we aren't granted this urban growth boundary, then we have to redistribute our zoning?
We'll have to look at a way to accommodate your jobs and housing forecasts within current boundaries.
Okay. And remember, it's by state law that we have to do this, right?
And what's our deadline for that?
Last year?
Technically, it's December 31, but.
Yeah, no, please speak up. Any, yeah.
There's been some discussion about whether or not that growth goes elsewhere. And, and until there's a very kind of blunt conversation with the county about that and what they're thinking. Yeah, yeah. The county holds the cards, if you will, on adopting urban growth boundary expansions or not. They're, they're kind of in the the law has them in the driver's seat, so to speak.
And we kind of need that type of, or that land up there to, it's not about the growth, it's just to actually survive, right? It's for our revenue sources. It's very imperative for the city of La Center.
So did anybody ask the group? I don't know if it was Friends of Clark County or whoever the the group promoting this agriculture land, who, who's planning on buying that property and planting potatoes? Or pumpkins? Or something? Because it's nobody's going to make a living off of their doing that. And I don't disagree with their arguments, maybe in some of those other 132,000 acres across the county, but it's obvious that there's not a family sustaining or even a viable plot of land there to to farm, to, you can't have cows, you can't have enough of them on there. You can't plant enough stuff to, to sustain a, a business.
To make matters even worse, out of all those acreage that we're looking at, there's only 22 usable for what we're talking about, 22 acres are usable. Is it 21 or 22?
I think I'd, I'd have to check with what's available in five. It's less than 113 acres.
Usable though, for what we can actually use because of all the other restrictions that are on there. We, we, we went through a tour, just so commission knows, we took a tour with the, one of the county councillors to show them the stuff. And we have a book that was put together that we can make sure that you guys can see that. Yeah, there's only 22 acres that are usable out of the acreage we're asking for. What was it? It was a protected lands, slopes. What else was there, Angie?
Yeah, there's, there's environmental constraints. And so I believe it is 23 acres.
23.
And we did provide the Clark County Council tour with the information that was all the links. I know I sent you guys a million attachments, but there's the tour on there and it is online too.
So on, on that, so you're saying that even all those acres there at five and six, there's only about 23 acres that are usable for getting the numbers? And those acres could give us the numbers we need?
Yes. Yes, that is what I'm saying. Yeah. You've got slopes, you've got environmental part of it. There's wetland. So it's a, it's a huge challenge. Yeah, a lot of that's not usable or even farmable, right? Because they can't farm in a wetland.
On a slope.
Or slope, yeah. Yes.
I would guess probably two weeks ago, I received a call from one of the owners. That's part of this number six category.
Oh, yeah.
And that prompted me to call Angie. She informed me about the tour.
It was a tour with the Clark County Council.
My question is, talking to him, he said that he's talked to several of his neighbors and they're all interested in wanting to come to the city.
Yes.
My question, a part of that is have they had an opportunity or will they be given the opportunity to speak to this subject?
We've actually, we tried to get them to do that. The county attorney, Chris Cook, advised the county councillors against that and not to speak with them, which we have not figured out why. Yeah. And, and you're correct in what you just said. Taking them around, they, they seen their, well, one of them's seen the, the challenges that we face with the property that we're looking at and the properties we don't have. Carlson property over there has a landfill, I said it right this time, skip a landfill on it that has been waiting for clearance from the EPA to even be usable. Nobody knows when that's going to be done. And it has its own and it has its own challenges, right? Even, even if it's ever cleared, you, you got slopes that are crazy there. So it's not all usable. We, we desperately do need these lands. We're not just going out to go, hey, we want to expand the city and grow the city for this or that. Bills come due, raises are, are every year and they don't stop. We truly need that land.
The disappointing thing is like, this is essentially our pathway to love it, like it, hate it, but sustainable growth. I mean,
Yeah.
I think that's like what our goal is here. I mean, I know the word growth is always a taboo subject in these parts, but I mean, we're, that's kind of our way to be able to manage growth within our city without losing the spirit of what we all moved here or grew up here with. So I guess I don't know what the workaround is.
Well, and if you notice by that map, everyone, that the, the growth is outs, on the other side of the bridge. And that's something we presented the county council is that we wanted to have any growth that'd be on the other side of the bridge. A, nobody's going to give us $20 million for a new bridge. Nobody's going to give us $100 million to buy property in Wyden Forest Street and La Center Road to Four Lanes or Park Highway. It's just not going to ever happen. So if we keep it on that side, it actually makes sense because businesses, industrial, commercial, they all want to be at the junction. It's easier for them to, to have their goods flow. Right? Trucks can enter on and off quickly. They're not coming in. I don't know if you guys have seen the roundabout, but when you drive through it next time, look down at the curbs. You'll see the trucks. The trucks are ignoring the law and just cutting through and they're destroying it. And I just found out yesterday after doing a walk around with Tracy down there, that each one of the panels they're destroying are about eight to $10,000 apiece. And it's going to be about 50 to $60,000 of repair because they don't want to obey the law. Right? Who's going to pay for that? This is why we, we have to look at these, these options out there and just educate the county council as to really why we need them and that they're not being used to grow anything. And to councillor Casper's point, they, there isn't anybody that's going to go out there and farm and make a living on those, on those at all. Yeah. And that's another thing. I, I normally we don't take questions out of the audience during a work session, but you're correct. There, there's no water rights. There's nothing there that's going to, you, you can't grow corn without water, right? I know everybody thinks it's a rainy area, but during the summer, it doesn't rain enough to, to water the corn. But that's a great point. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dennis.
Yeah. Owners of the property there would like to do some part of the city. Is it? Do we have, do they have access to our legal side city here to give them any
We.
suggestions on what they might be able to do on, on behalf of themselves and the city?
Well, we've, you know, that's kind of a sticky situation there because you can't give public funds, right? And so that's kind of that point of it. They've already hired their own attorneys who have been working on their behalf and they're great attorneys, actually. And they've already done their own ag study that the new ag study didn't even look at.
We've done everything we've
Yes, yes. And, and everybody there has come to us wanting to come into the city. We didn't pursue anybody. There's nobody that the city actually went after and said, hey, we want your property. Why don't you come with us? Nothing like that at all. Well, we need to make you guys aware of what's actually taking place and that we could be changing the decision that was made that we were pursuing. But we really wanted you to be aware of the ag study and then Marty wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of the rest of it there, so. Yes. I'm going to leave that and defer it over to Marty. Marty, does A and B actually meet the goals that the county has designated?
I was just asking Angie that question. I was, it was, I'll say honestly, it was before my time. So I have to defer to people who are, who are here. I believe Alec might have, Alec, are you still?
Yeah, I'm still, I'm still on. The question is if scenario A and B met our growth targets.
requirements of the state and the county.
Yeah, they did, but they both proposed expansion in the same areas of five and six. So it's the same kind of the same issue where you need the county to recognize the de-designation to expand into these areas.
And so just to close that, we don't have a proposal that we've looked at that would meet the requirement of no urban growth boundary and still need job creation.
We've been exploring a few things, yes. No. No. Not this time. That would be their question, but real quick before you bring that up, someone had said something about the jobs, you know, that they may reallocate those. That would be disastrous for us. Right? We have the residential, but we don't have the jobs. So we don't have the revenue source to sustain moving forward. I want that to sink into everybody so they understand. Without a revenue source, we are a bedroom community. And when the money goes the opposite direction, which Mr. Carlson back there was in the same boat 30, 40 years ago before he legalized or him and his council legalized gambling in the city. Right? That without the jobs creation, you can look at bankruptcy and I don't even know what happens at that point as a city. And I'm not saying that to scare anybody or be in the next five years. It could take 20 years. I, I don't know. I'm just telling you, those are those are the reality of not having enough revenue in the, in the city. So losing those jobs would be detrimental to the city. So go ahead. I'm, Marty, were you able to?
Yeah, the, the alternative two is what the city's submitted to the county. I will note that they, they've gotten, excuse me, they have an error on all two for La Center that did not include that expansion number five. So we're going to make a note of that to the EIS. Alternative three is actually the city's plus property owners who submitted what's called a site-specific request. And there are a number of them, some of which are, you know, way away from any city or town. It's changing like, you know, R20 to R5 or ag something to R5 and those are outside of any of the kind of cities, UGAs and kind of spheres of influence. But the point of, of the alternatives under the EIS is that if, if, if you have something that you've not studied in the EIS, then that's a risk that anybody runs. You can't bring up something that wasn't studied under the EIS. Yes. The county could come up with some hybrid of alternatives as well. They had, what they call the no action alternative, which is essentially not, not expanding any of the boundaries, making some zone changes within UGAs. They have some requirements under the state law for housing, particularly accessory dwelling units, what are called missing metal units, like, you know, townhouses and duplexes and cottage housing, things like that. So that's in there, no action alternative. You can go, actually, the county has the EIS on its website and they have they do have kind of on the contact, you know, who to contact and the deadline for comments, which would be submitted by Sunday, the 30th. Well, I, the, the city is going to have a, a letter that will, that will be submitted along with a, a list of comments regarding certain assumptions and the scenario that the city submitted to the county, just clarifications, corrections. And then there are some other general comments about the EIS that, that Tracy and the mayor will take a look at shortly. Yes. I would.
Yeah, we can post that. It'll have to be after we get the letter written. Yeah. Yeah. We, we just had our meeting yesterday, so we're just getting started on that now. We, we just had our meeting yesterday, so we're just getting started on that now. Yeah. And holidays are coming up, so it's going to be a rush, rush. Marty's, uh, starting to sweat a little bit. Yes.
But to help in this situation, are they, are they in any position to potentially help us in this?
Marty, you look like you were sitting up to say something. If you got something to say, go right ahead.
I'll just make kind of an editorial.
Yeah.
Comment that changes to the Growth Management Act have been going on since 1990, when it was first adopted. And it's, it's a cottage industry for special interest groups, citizens, community members, legislators. There have been, as we've mentioned before, some changes to GMA regarding, uh, housing requirements. Um, and I'm not sure if it was touched on much, but there's a new requirement that you have to look at affordability. So you have to look at income bands of zero to 30% of area median, median income, 30 to 50, 50 to 80, 80 to 100, and I think 120 and above. So, um, some of those changes, changes in GMA, it's, there's, um, I've seen it where there are some bills introduced. They don't make any traction year one. They might make a little traction year two. Maybe year three or four, something's adopted. So, um, it's, yeah, we're, we're kind of stuck with what we've got to work with at the moment. That's all I'll say about that.
To your question though, Dennis, I, I have spoke to two of them, um, just to see if there was anything that could be done and there's not. Yeah, I, I thought the same thing you did too. And I attended a few fundraisers, uh, and spoke with them off to the side just to find out. There's not much that can be done at that. Right. You are always willing to speak to any of them. Sure. Sure. As soon as we get it written, you'll, you'll get to see what it looks like. Yeah. We could do that, right, Angie?
Yes, I can, I'll send that to you. And I can also give you some links where you can actually email, uh, Clark County councillors as well.
Yeah, yeah.
It, it doesn't, no.
You can say planning commission. It doesn't matter. Yeah. About as much weight as me putting mayor at the end of the title. I mean, it's, they're, they're titles, right? They're, it's the same thing.
I will say that, that there is a local legislative body, which is the county council. You know, they, they will be looking at this ag study and the criteria, once again, determinations on whether all of the criteria, a small amount of criteria or more criteria are considered when they start looking at agricultural land designation. The electorate of Clark County.
My question today, as I was reading through all pages and pages, of when did this mandate on the GMA that you have to have so many properties raised from a low density to a medium density? Cause we didn't talk about that last year. So this is new in the last month or?
No.
But we didn't talk about it last year that we had to, it was a must. The word must was several times in that paperwork.
What was your question? I didn't, I, I'm sorry.
That was reading about, you know, for this land use, that you must upgrade it from low, low density to medium density.
Is, is that in the, um, since the report for this evening? Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, I think so.
Do you have a three ring binder on that? That's amazing. Today?
Today. It's starting at nine this morning.
Okay.
Another question I have is that the charcoal colored, uh, section four up there, if that's the same as, you know, that'll be for industry two?
That's residential.
That, that is, um, that was just, you said number four, right?
Yes.
Okay. So that's Juniper Ridge that was recently up, um, zoned to MDR 16.
Say that again.
That is Juniper Ridge subdivision. It was upzoned to MDR 16.
Oh, okay.
Recently.
Yeah, like a month ago or something.
Yeah.
That would get you.
So. So one, one point of looking at rezoning property to MDR or HDR is that you get apartments which then go toward your 80% and below of your area median income. So it's, it's about the affordability, uh, component of your housing element. If you had nothing but single family residential on large lots, you may not get to the requirement of providing housing that is 80% and below area median income. So that's one of the reasons any of the cities are looking at rezoning property to multifamily or medium density family, a medium density residential.
Yeah, I, I, I got that from reading all that. Yeah.
So we would appreciate it if any of you guys want to speak with the county councillors to please reach out to them. Only if you believe in what we're talking about, right? I, I'm not going to twist anybody's arms, but it's your guys' decision. Um, but I would, uh, I would ask you to do that if, if, if you have the time.
I was just looking at the calendar and it looks as though there may be, um, it looks like the only remaining council meetings are the first week of December, Monday, the first and Tuesday, the second. And next week is canceled because of the holiday. The following week is, is that there's nothing for two weeks and everything at the end of the month is canceled. So.
Yeah. And that goes past the comment period, but you can still make a public comment as well. Um, just know, uh, for the record that we do have councillor Little coming out for a tour, which I'll be taking him on next week. Um, we will be bringing councillor Young back out or hopefully, and then councillor Belkot as well. So we want to run them through the terrain and show them why we are looking at what we're looking at. Myself and Tracy, we had the attorney last time, um, Angie and Peter. Uh, this next tour will probably be me and maybe one other person and run it on like a side by side to run through the terrain. Skip, we're coming your way. Councillor Young. And Little. Yeah. Councillor Marshall, um, is pretty stuck with her vision and her narrative. She is not going to change. And then, uh, Will, councillor Fuentes is alongside her with his decision. I am asking any of them, and actually I did ask all of them to come out and, um, you can do a FOIA on an email that was sent to councillor Fuentes for me if you'd like. Um, in it, uh, because we did a joint work session two months ago with the county, uh, the mayors and then the county councillors, um, and then some city councillors. And in it, uh, councillor Fuentes, um, doubted the reason why we needed the land and said we had plenty. And I challenged that and I invited any of them out for a tour and they all seemed pretty excited. And then, uh, councillor Fuentes refused to come out on the tour. Um, so I did send him an email and told him his opinion was just that now, an opinion without merit. And I left it at that. Well, ta- taking them through the Carlson property shows them, you know, the usability of the Carlson property. And then also the challenges of the EPA and, and getting the land back in, right? So that land at this point cannot be used for anything. Um, I also like to point out that some of the land that we'll be taking them on has diesel semi trucks working on it. Um, that leak transmission, leak oil and everything else. So that's an EPA disaster, right? And who's going to be responsible, uh, to clean that up so they can grow corn? So I, I like to point out the obvious and the common sense there and then show them the terrain and the reason why we are asking for those properties. And the reason we're asking for those properties is that a lot of the terrain that is already in our, uh, growth or in our city limits is not usable. And we have to meet these requirements that the state has put on the city. Uh, and that's really the only vision that we've seen so far that actually works for it without coming to them and saying, now we need a $20 million bridge. Yes, yeah. Thank you, Josh. Yeah. Thank you for attending. Appreciate it. Yeah, that's a good question. I, I don't know if we have anything that you.
So we do have three different scenarios that we can go ahead and put up there. And one does recommend for adoption. There's one that doesn't recommend for adoption. And then there's a, a third one. And so when we do, when you do a motion, we can put all three of those on there and not actually do a recommendation at that time.
It does make sense. Okay.
Very, one last thing I'll, I'll point out for anybody who's looking at a lot of the attachments, that percent. I'm not sure if everybody's seen all of that material. For your reading pleasure and maybe to put you to sleep, uh, there's an attachment E and it's a summary of, yes, I see that heft.
That was today, she said.
Very impressive, by the way. Uh, the attachment E is a summary of Clark County's agricultural resource land study. And if you look at it, it has, um, some tables of information, including what is the WAC criteria, what does the law say? What is the, what is the language? Um, what does, did the study evaluate? Um, what were the findings of the study? And then the last column has a determination and anything that's in green highlight, they say that they're going to use. And everything in the orange, I believe it is, I kind of picked the fun color. It's kind of a salmon color, uh, reads this criterion will not be utilized for use in final, the final evaluation. So if you want to take a look at the summary of the entire report, um, it's that attachment E. I don't.
I believe it's numbered. It's, yeah, I can double check it. I want to say that it was numbered the way that we sent it out. It was like number one, two, three, four. It's the summary of the meeting tonight. Oh, okay. So that it is an attachment.
I don't know.
I believe it's an attachment that I sent to you. If not, it is on our website under the comprehensive plan.
Correct. That's it. Yeah.
Yes.
So if you feel the need to get a little sleep, just pull that up and start reading through it.
Marty, so after we send this letter, I just want the council and the commission to hear this. After we send this letter and we don't hear anything, uh, working on a different scenario, will we have some information available for the commission and the council to look at at some point here?
Yeah, I'm, we have a meeting tomorrow with Clark County staff and it'll be interesting to see what kind of discussion ensues and what direction that they'll want to take for cities that have UGA expansions. Um, La Center's not the only one, mind you. Um, so we'll, we'll see what happens there. Uh, the letter that we'll put together, it's going to be fairly general because the EIS is like 300 pages. And we're not looking at every last single page and every last single paragraph. Um, we're kind of giving a little highlight and then kind of, um, providing a table of comments that clarify, are correct, um, the assumptions and the land use alternative that the city submitted. Um, so there'll be a letter and attached will be this kind of comment table and that'll be, I'll be working on that between now and Tuesday. I have obligations on Wednesday with the son coming home from school, so.
Definitely important for the family time.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, council, commission, do you guys have any questions? Any comments, conversation amongst each other?
No, I think I've said before that the, the county has a long history of paying for studies and then not listening to them. Sounds like maybe now they're just moving towards paying for studies that tell them what they want to hear instead.
Um, yeah.
I think that one of our strongest chances of, of having this being successful is public comment and emails. And, um, you know, it's already an uphill battle because they, they're not listening to the property owners. They're not listening to their study. They're not listening to the city's reasonable requests in my mind. Um, so I think, I think public comment is it. I think emails are appropriate. Maybe don't put city of La Center in the, uh, subject line, put, uh, urban, urban growth act or something along those lines. So that.
You win a million dollars and they'll open it.
That might be an idea. I don't know. Uh, but we want them to, to read those, those emails. So, yeah, I think if we can, if we can spread that word quickly amongst our friends and family in town and even if it just says, hey, please go with what the center is requesting. It'll at least show that there's a, a lot of people that want that option up there. And it's not the special interest groups that are just arguing to argue. It's, it's what's going to keep La Center functioning.
And that letter should be sent to each of the councillors, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely, there is.
Yeah, you're talking about Counselor Sue Marshall? Yeah, she has a narrative and she's out to grow her acorns or whatever she grows. I, I don't know. Yeah. Right. She is the chair of the county council. She's also the one that came out with me for two years and I walked her around the entire city and areas and showed her the plans. And she supported it 100%. And then on the dais in March, completely changed the, to 180 degrees. Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I, I'm highly doubtful of that, to be honest with you. She's, yes, actually, they were all invited. Yeah. She's, she denied the request. Yeah, her and Counselor Fuentes. He is good, all right, council is good. Does she have something she wants to say?
Tracy. Yes.
All right.
Um, I would just like to say that Angie and I are putting together a one to two page sheet that will talk about, uh, it'll give all the contact emails for the council members for Clark County. And it'll talk about what, what they've done. So if anybody does want to email them, they'll have some facts in front of them. If they'd like to send them an individual email. So we'll have that ready and we'll have that on the website by Friday. And we'll have them ready for handing out at the next council meeting.
Yeah.
In that regard, again, can the district remind us again, what is the timing that we have to get this response?
Written, written comment is the end of the month, November 30th, yes. Yeah.
I'm just thinking that I'd be willing to go. My wife Judy maintains our email list for our community. I'd be willing to send out a note to them and says, are you interested in helping?
Yeah.
Reach out.
Yeah.
If they do, they say, yeah, 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 yeah. I'll be able to get something to them. Clock is ticking, unfortunately, it's moving pretty quickly here.
Yeah, it is, it is. And with the holidays and between everything, so it shortens the time period even more so. So as soon as Tracy and Angie get the, that together and, and Marty gets the letter written, we'll make sure that each one of the councilors and the commissioners get that. And it will go on the website. There's nothing being hidden from the community at all.
I just would like to add that, um, that an email to all of the Clark County councilors can go anytime. There's not a deadline for that. So I would encourage to comment for the DEIS, but also send your comments to the Clark County councilors so they can hear from you. Right.
Thank you.
And there was, three of us plus the mayor had gone, I think it was in September, that we went and spoke during public comment, uh, regarding the.
What? When did we speak?
I don't know, was it September?
No.
When was it then?
I think our last, when was the last time we were at the county council meeting? Was that April?
No.
No.
Was it later?
It was much later than that.
Was it, I don't know, I went to like six of them right in a row trying to persuade.
Anyway, we went, we went and spoke directly on, uh, sections five and six. And this was before, when they were trying to decide if they were going to.
Do the study.
Do the ag study or not.
Oh, that would have been in May, like before May, wasn't it? When did they start that the ag study didn't start till like June, right? July, yeah, yeah, so it'd have been May or June. That's how long ago it was.
Well, it seemed like September. The time's not important. We did it.
No, but you know, what's, what's important, so the commissioner knows and the, and the people know, is that Counselor Marshall, after they called a vote, four hours of us being there testifying and the city of Ridgefield doing the same thing. They did a vote, went in favor of everything. And three hours, we, we leave, all of us leave. And three hours later, she brings it back up again to do another vote. So, and she did that, what, two times, Marty, was it?
I think there were at least a couple delays getting the egg study done.
Yeah.
So it wasn't done. And I think they, they contracted with Echo Northwest in July. Very, very quick turnaround.
So that's what we're up against, just so you know. Dennis.
They had, I mean, they had a scope of work and they looked at a lot of, they looked at a lot of data through the GIS system. So you, when you look at the study, there are maps and tables of information about, you know, acreage calculations. They did interview a, a couple sets of stakeholder groups that did not include cities or landowners, but mostly, um, the advisory committee, friends of Clark County, uh, a couple other folks, some farmers. But, um, yeah, they had, um, they had a scope of work, which, when you look at the summary of the study, I just closed it, but basically the, the, the focus of the study was to determine whether the ag lands that they have today still meet the criteria. It was not to look at de-designating lands. So it's, it's the other side of the coin that they've not looked at.
All right, council, commission, um, at this point, it's, uh, 6:18. We have a county council or a city council meeting tonight in 12 minutes. If there's no further conversations or comments, I'd like to close the meeting.
Oh, let's close the meeting. Motion to close the meeting.
It's moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Thank you. I, I.
Clerk, please start the recording. Today is Wednesday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and I'd like to call tonight's City Council meeting to order. We call, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, can I please have a roll call?
Councilmember Fox, present.
Councilmember Casper.
I'm here.
Councilmember Boyle.
Uh, present.
Councilmember Leah.
Here.
Councilmember Servini.
Present.
Mayor Strope.
Here. Thank you, clerk. Thank you, everyone. Clerk, can I please call up any public comments from the audience?
Al Phyllis.
And he stepped out for just a second. Al?
We need the theme song.
The theme song?
Al Phyllis, three six zero one six, North West End, McRoe. Boy, that was a lot of great news, you know? But remember, you know, the bottom line is, the mayor's in charge, everything's his fault.
That's where it rolls.
Yeah, a lot of activities going on. Do you hear everybody's plan, what to do and everything else? Some people have planned what they're gonna do with all their extra time, because they're no longer gonna have to come down here on Wednesday, you know, but, you know, we'll miss. Thank you, God bless America.
Thank you, Ron.
Melissa Gerard.
Hi, Melissa Gerard, Lassiter United. So, we've been about forty-five days, fifty days, fifty days without any funds. We've managed to pull off breakfast with Santa, we have the fun run coming up, we have an art hand training. So, we're still alive and kicking, still doing stuff, had a couple newsletters, we have people ask, hey, uh, I think you were sending an email. Somebody came down looking for a city calendar for events, which actually referred them to us. So, I'm really hoping that if the city has events, that they email the city events to the newsletter email for Lassiter United, because it's not a same position. I don't have as much time to go pensive and pecking for everybody's information, and we don't need that current information, so we pleasureize as much. Yeah, so we're alive and kicking, and we have some things coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kimberly Goheen Elba.
Here, but I guess you guys can all hear me. Hi, Kimberly Goheen Elba. Well, I attended both planning commission meetings last week, and I'm not mistaken, I heard that Lassiter has met the housing requirements to satisfy the GMA and the comp plan. I again will say that Lassiter is suffering from overpopulation pollution for a few reasons. Of said population pollution, car traffic congestion, car pollution overload, clear pollution down the Lewis River overload, and overdevelopment of the Timmins Landing, where wooded areas will be taken at the expense of all wildlife there, including, for the national bird, the eagle soars. There will be a time that development stops, and that time is now. As I drive throughout Clark County, especially near Timmins Landing, I see more deer on the road as development is forcing them out of their natural habitat. I'm talking about all of Clark County. They're just scattering these little babies, you know, trying to run across the road. So, growth and development must come to an end. I'll also suggest to the planning commission that be publicly made aware of any property owners selling their land here in Lassiter. But more importantly, how the public know beforehand that developers are interested in said properties before the developer invests their monies to develop. The way it is now, the developer invests in the property, they make requests to the town, and then goes to the planning commission, and that's when the public is informed. And by then, for me at least, it seems like a done deal. And as mentioned, the developers has already invested tons of money, and the field is to move forward even if the public does not approve. Therefore, informing the public is just symbolic in nature, and the development will continue. The public needs to know of any developers that are interested in properties before they invest. Had this been done with the Timmins Landing property, those sixty concerned citizens that do not want development there would have been able to speak up before monies were already invested for the development and monies passed around. Timmins is still an active duty that I will continue to pursue. I'd like to mention our Meals on Wheels. I believe that it's a very wonderful service, it's great fellowship. I hope more people come, and I was gonna say more on that, that God is always good, and He's always good to me, and I appreciate that, amen. Today's meeting about the comp plan, Clark County did not have to get involved in the comp plan or the GMA. In fact, the state puts forth certain requirements and this and that, and counties and cities in particular can, uh, don't have to pass these initiatives and these things. We do need money and stuff, so I'm gonna do my very best to talk to the county council meetings, of which I have for years now, and I've listened to everything go on, that we do get active for, that we can develop up there at the junction. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly.
There are no more comment cards.
Okay, anybody calling in, please press star six to unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record. Clerk, are there any callers?
No callers with comments.
All right, light night tonight. Clerk, are there any comments to be read?
No comments to be read.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. If there are no requests for any items to be removed, can I get a motion?
So moved?
Second.
It's the move second and third. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Thank you, council. We do have a... Do we have the preview tonight? I thought we were postponing that. Is Hannah online with us? Hannah, are you online with us? I apologize, everyone, I thought we postponed this till the tenth of December. Yeah, I believe that was postponed, sorry. Thank you very much. So, we'll take two point six one and postpone that to December tenth. Mayor's report. Santa's House calls is up and running. It's Friday, December fifth, five thirty PM to eight thirty PM. Signups are open at the Lassiter Christmas Festival website. Please visit it, sign up. We ask our, for those that don't know what it's about, Santa Claus comes in a fire truck, gives your kids candy canes, takes pictures with you, stays in the truck. It's rather fast, but it's a, it's a pretty neat time. We ask that to give something in return for those in need. The gifts that we collect go to the Giving Tree, which is then distributed to local Lassiter residents, just so you know. The Christmas Festival is Sunday, December seventh, twelve to six PM downtown Lassiter here. You can also visit the Lassiter Christmas Festival website for that as well. It's gonna be a good time. We have a bigger stage, more acts, and a lot more stuff for families to do, and some good food. Plus, we have a great MC. Oh, it's also on our website, too. We have a great MC this year. I think it's, uh, somebody you guys are familiar with. Yeah?
Hmm?
Oh, I didn't know if you kicked me or something over there.
No, I was just pointing out that the Christmas Festival, uh, there's a link to the schedule on the city website.
Oh, perfect, thank you. Commander Phil Sample will be MCing the event all day, so come on down. Yes. Should be a good time. Our offices will be closed November twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth for Thanksgiving. I do wanna wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Please take time out of your busy schedules and hectic family events to think of those that can't do what you're about to do that day. And if you know anybody that is lonely or needs a meal or something, invite them over to your house. You'll find out, you might find a new friend or a new family. December, City Council meetings will be December tenth and the seventeenth this next month, and the seventeenth is our State of the City meeting. So, it will be a regular City Council meeting with a little additive to it, and I will be presenting the State of the City address. That'll be held at the Community Center. Another thing I'd like to do is, Janine, are you with us?
I am, can you hear me?
Right. So, at this point, I, last week, I made it known that Janine will be leaving the city service. Unfortunately, we, we're gonna miss her, but we have somebody that is willing to step into the shoes and into the fire, um, and just as lovely. Beth Ford will be the new city attorney, and this is Beth here. Beth, welcome.
Hi, Beth, meet everybody, welcome.
So, that brings us up to the attorney's report. Janine, do you have anything to report tonight?
Um, nothing to report this evening, just welcome, Beth, and we'll, we'll be working on getting all the projects transferred over and all as well. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Beth, let her do our first city attorney report.
Great, I'm just gonna introduce myself. Hello, everybody. My name is Beth Ford. I'm with Lighthouse Law Group. I am a partner there. I have been practicing municipal law for thirteen years, representing small cities in Western Washington. Uh, I have a broad range of experience drafting ordinances, providing legal advice on Public, Open Public Meetings Act, Public Records Act, police advice, code enforcement, finance, et cetera. I also do litigation for Lighthouse, and the other partners in the firm also specialize in various areas. There's someone who does labor negotiations, contracting, land use, and so on. So, we are all just very excited to meet all of you and work with all of you staff elected, everyone. Please feel free to contact me if you ever have any questions or concerns. That's all I have for you. Very nice to be here, nice to meet everybody.
Thank you, Beth, council. Keep that down. We don't wanna spend lots of money. Sorry, Beth. I'm just kidding. Thank you. Any questions for Janine or the new attorney?
Do you work for any local, small cities around us?
I have done some contract work for Clark County, but our lighthouse of main clients are the City of Edmonds, the City of Plaidville, and the City of Maple Valley. Oh, okay, great.
Any other questions? All right, thank you again, Beth. Thank you, Janine. All right, next up, council comments. Councilmember Fox.
Hi, good evening, happy to be here. Don't have much to say tonight, but I hope everyone has a lovely Thanksgiving. I'll be in Palm Springs, sorry, not sorry. But enjoy yourself, be safe, and see you in December.
Is her term almost over? I'm just asking.
Senioritis.
Yeah, Councilmember Casper.
Thank you. I would just like to tell Janine thank you once again for her work. I thought she's done a great job for us, and then, welcome, Beth.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyle.
All right, oh boy, let's not spill everything here. All right, good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here. I got a little CTRAN board update for you guys. So, last night, we had our Board Composition Review Committee. That is just completely separate from the CTRAN Board of Directors. I serve on both of those. And the BRCRC only, we meet like every four years. This year's been a little bit different, because in July, there was a new RCW that was passed by the state legislator that took effect in July for us to come up with a new board composition. I've kinda talked about this before, but just kinda recapping it a little bit, where they thought that our representation was disproportionate based on our population. So, the board was tasked with coming up with a new proportionality method model that would suit better for the whole county. So, we fought really hard to go with a three-three-three model, which would be three representatives from the City of Vancouver, three from the County Council, and three from the small cities. The state did not agree with that when we made that proposal, and they rejected it, and said that they didn't believe that that was concurrent with the spirit of the, of the new RCW. So, we kinda had to go back to the drawing board with that, and there's been several other things that have happened through that. And last night, we have, came to terms with, the, the B, the Board Composition Review Committee came to terms, there was a motion made to go with a four-three-two model that was, um, you know, would give the City of Vancouver four, uh, four seats, County Council three, and the small cities being us, Lassiter Ridgefield, or sorry, Lassiter Ridgefield, Yakalt Battleground would share a seat, and then Camas Washougal would, would share a seat. And, um, so, we would be losing some representation there, but there's some stipulations made to that. And one of them being that, with that, the small cities would not fund any of the maintenance or operations costs for the light rail. That's kinda been the big hangup for that, so we would not be, our point seven percent would not be going towards light rail funds. So, that was part of our, um, the, the state wasn't gonna back down from the four-three-two model. So, we kinda have, came up with our own way. Still don't know if they're gonna accept that, but that's what the plan is for now. And then, there was an amendment made to that motion where, um, it would also stipulate that the County Council cannot appoint a CTRAN board representative that falls within the City of Vancouver's district. So, basically, that is how it works right now. If, um, the, the City of Vancouver has their four seats, and any of those county councillors fall within the city limits of City of Vancouver, you essentially have a super majority. So, we're trying to prevent that, and that was voted across the BRCRC board last night. I think it went like eight-two or something like that. So, that's good news. It's still gotta get through, passed through at the, through the CTRAN Board of Directors. And so, at least there's some progression. I mean, it's not, not the, the outcome we're ultimately looking for, but I feel like it's, it's a, it's a good move, and it's gonna at least keep us out of, you know, funding something that I feel like our constituents don't have the desire to pay for. So, um, with, another thing with that, it was also kind of, there was an abrupt turn to the night, and, uh, um, shoot. So, our chair, our board chair for the Board of Directors for CTRAN, her name's Molly Costin. She is a city council, city council member for the City of Bridgefield. She was actually their former mayor. She, very kind lady, very astute, shows up to everything. She didn't show up to our meeting as per usual. I'm used to getting there, they serve lunch before we have our meetings, but I get there early, and her and I usually have a little chat, she wasn't there. So, they were kind of looking for her, and unfortunately, it was discovered that she had passed sometime before the meeting. And, um, yeah, so I, I just wanted to take a moment of silence for her. All right, thank you, guys. All right, and then, yeah, that was quite, uh, it was just a weird thing, I don't know. Makes you, anytime, anything that's family, friends, it always makes you think twice about, you know, keeping your loved ones closer, giving them a call, a hug, whatever it may be, friends. You know, we're in that time of the year where it's just great to reach out to people and check in, so, um, yeah, we, uh, are, give our condolences to her family and, and the City of Washougal as well. She was a huge part of their community, so, um, other than that, I don't know, I feel like I, that was probably my, all I got. I'm tapped. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyle. Appreciate that. Councilmember Leah.
Well, thank you to everyone that has come tonight, and I hope that you all have a very nice Thanksgiving. I have tons of family coming in from all over. So, um, I hope that, that all of you will be blessed with a happy Thanksgiving. One thing I'd like to share, it doesn't particularly have to do with Lassiter, but I went to a beautiful event last Friday night that's called Restore and Revive, and it was started several years ago by someone that, um, that had addiction problems and had been in and out of jail. And me being a retired jailer, I just have such a heart for people that go through this and then get it together, and then are successful in their life. So, she started this organization, and they help people, and they help with mental health issues and addiction issues, and, um, they, they consider getting them mental health and addiction, you know, counseling and whatever they need to, for help with that, instead of just giving them housing and then walking away. They, they wanna do something to help them. And out of two hundred people that was helped last year, that was just given housing but didn't get the mental health counseling they needed, or the, um, you know, drug addiction problems counseling that they needed, um, I think it was a hundred and fifty-four of those, you know, failed, went back to whatever their addiction was or their mental health issues. So, very, very, very sad. So, it was a great event. I'm always looking into going to events like that and learning, and you, you never know when something could apply to a center, so, in some way that you can help people. So, very, very happy to see. very, very happy to see anytime I see an inmate out, which I just saw one at Wilco the other day, um, and see that they're doing well. I am, I'm very, very thankful for that and I tell him so. So I shook his hand and said, hey, it looks like you're doing good. So I appreciate that. So anyway, thank you for everyone for coming tonight and, uh, I'm, that's, that's all I got to say for tonight.
Thank you. Council member Serbini.
Thank you. I'd like to wish everyone a very blessed Thanksgiving and safe holiday for you and your family. And encourage you to take a few moments during the day, perhaps with your prayer, um, to incorporate gratefulness and gratitude for all that we're blessed with here in this community of ours. Um, I think we get caught up on the little things and pick apart ridiculous things, um, what color the lights are, for example, um, and fail to recognize just exactly what we do have. And perhaps we can turn that around as a community and move forward stronger in the coming year and, um, really focus on everything we do have. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Yes. Happy Thanksgiving, right? All right. We do have some staff reports tonight. Uh, first up is the police department staff report. Mr. Commander Phil Sample will be presenting. Commander.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. First off, I want to tell you that the sheriff's offices have their annual shift bid. Typically we do it once a year to find out who's going to move where and work in what areas. Uh, this year unfortunately we had it twice, but that's a different story. Uh, we picked up a lateral from South Carolina by the name of Price. We work in our day shifts on the A side. Uh, then we also have Jones will be back. Keep it for a little center to come back here. And then we have Sean Boyle and also Travis will be back. So that's a pretty good team. We're going to try to get them together. We need to get a little bit of training done so we can get our, uh, radar certifications met so we can go out and continue on with the traffic. And that's a big deal for us, but I just want to tell you that we have a good team coming up for you in twenty twenty-six. All right. So to the stats here, sports report, uh, calls for service here, twenty twenty-four. There were a hundred and forty-four initiated, community issued of reports, seventy-eight deputy and two twenty-two as a total. Twenty twenty-five, we had a hundred and thirty-five community initiator reports, sixty-eight for deputies, and the total was two thou- or two hundred and three. So we're still pretty close on those totals right there. Our next slide, our reports taken for the month of October. And twenty twenty-three, there were thirty-two, twenty-seven and twenty-four, and in twenty twenty-five, there were twenty-eight reports. And I always put in some of the notable calls there from the reports taken. So on our next page coming up. So our first one starts off with a fraud. A citizen noticed his credit card information had been stolen when he received an alert from his bank reporting suspicious activity. The suspect or suspects attempted to purchase two gaming computers. The citizen found another line of credit open in his name. He tried to purchase gold on a, uh, transaction. Additionally, a Discover card, a natural gas account, a tractor supply credit account and a PayPal account were all opened in his name. All the accounts were closed when it was discovered. It was also found that there, he, the suspect had a Washington driver's license with his information on it, but their picture. So that's how they were going through developing all these accounts. We don't have enough information. So that case is suspended right now pending more information on it. Uh, the next one we had a theft. It was a aluminum countertop frames worth six thousand dollars were stolen. Sitting, the citizen left the frames at his house. When he returned, the frames were gone. Unknown suspects, no videos of the crime and no serial numbers for identification. That's also been suspended. Our next one, we had a violation of a harassment, no contact order. A male citizen had been arrested for assault, for domestic violence. After being released from Clark County Jail, he was issued a no contact order. And then he violated the terms of the no contact order and was rearrested. Uh, per the no contact order, his guns were, uh, taken, his concealed weapons permit was taken. And they're all going to be held for safekeeping at the sheriff's office pending its court ruling and him recovering the guns back. Uh, this one, this next one here, a gentleman came into the precinct to report that his children were not a missing runaway. Uh, he had three girls with him, which were all his daughters, reporting part of the mother of his children. He and her having a strange relationship. They've had three children together. Uh, the female parent filed a police report in Reno, Nevada on one of the children, which was taken to juvenile hall for the night for assault on her. And the child's release was released to the father. She then arranged, oh, excuse me, she then agreed to keep the father, keep the children with the father until a later date in November. The mother returned to Vallejo, California and filed a runaway missing report on the three children. The ValleopD noticed the kids as, uh, the database as missing and runaway and had allegedly obtained a court order to immediately return the kids to their mother in California. After receiving the Vallejo Police Department report, the kids were removed from the missing runaway database by Clark County Sheriff's Office. And the court was, court order was never forwarded to us for further investigation into the missing allegation. So all the kids look healthy, happy, remain with their father till the agreed date that they would return home. And the return date should be tomorrow. Suspicious circumstance, an elderly man was parked, parked his car in the center city hall parking lot with heavy front end damage. Reporting party observed the man was only wearing a soiled diaper and seemed out of it. Elder, elderly man said he had driven from Auburn, Washington and he was going to see his wife here in the center. Police reports indicate his wife was deceased. According to the deputy, the elderly man appeared to be gravely disabled and a danger to himself. He was later transported by AMR to peace health where he was given medical attention. We don't have any further information at that point to whether they found his family or not. So, uh, that's, that's kind of sad right there that he would drive down here to see his wife and she's deceased. So, and he's from the area. Uh, our traffic was a little down this month here. We had six traffic infractions, four criminal. Um, I will say we've seen several complaints about speeding on Fourteenth Avenue around Pack Highway. We have actively been sitting in those locations to watch people coming down the hill to, to warn them of the speed. Uh, we're going to actively be stopping them to go along with the other locations that we go to. So I, we have noticed people have been going through there and with the traffic report given to us by Public Works, it's been a big help for us to recognize the timeframes of day that they are coming down through there. Um, auto prowls. Please report auto prowls to Cressa three one one dispatch. And this will potentially help us maybe connect multiple crimes together and it might be the same person committing them. And the more reports that we get and the more ring camera footage we have and the more information we have, we can start trying to build a case to a person to actually have this, uh, this theft stopped. So please make sure to lock your vehicles at night, remove all valuable items, gym bags, wallets, credit cards, driver's license, electronic gear. Auto prowls are typically a crime of opportunity. So let's reduce the opportunity. And this also applies, applies when you go for Christmas season's coming up. You're going to go to the mall and to stores, other places like that. Take all your valuables out of sight, put them away, lock your cars. Cause that's a great shopping time because they know you're buying stuff. You've got money in hand. So let's try not to be the victim.
Okay, is that even, is that as if, is that goes, uh?
You said you ran out of gas on the last comment, so.
So, um, is that if you see an active car theft happening or, uh, I don't know, auto prowling? If you see it actively happening, should you still call three one one or should you call nine one one?
If it's active, I'd call nine one one.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought, but I just.
So if it's cold, if you, you go out in the morning and you notice, hey, my door's been opened. I'm missing my wallet, my ID and everything from inside. That's, we still need to write a report on that because we can start looking at the similarities on and trying to put them together. Do we have one actor? Do we have multiple actors? Uh, there was one not too long ago down by the post office, actually two by the post office. And we believe that was the same suspect. So the most recent one was up here, I think by the Riverside Estates somewhere in that area. Or maybe it was the Heights, but, uh, there was, it was all on Facebook. It wasn't, nobody called in to report it. Nobody said anything. No one shared any type of video footage. So I'm urging people to please call in if it's cold, three one one. If it's in progress, nine one one. October, we had our prescription drug take backs. We talked about, uh, we received sixty-six pounds of prescription drugs for disposal. That was very, very good. Uh, I think the citizens were coming by and dropping off the old prescription drugs to get rid of them. We don't, we definitely don't want to run down the sewer system or anything of that nature. So dispose of them properly. And on a final note, uh, I'll have to tell on myself here. I plagiarized this. This is not all from me. So, but last year I said around Halloween or Halloween, Thanksgiving, I said the in-laws and the outlaws. So this year I'm going to change, change it up a little bit. As we head into the holiday, may your homes be filled with good food, good company and plenty of gratitude. Please take a moment to stay safe, travel carefully, cook mindfully and look out for one another. So enjoy the time with family and friends and may your holiday be peaceful, joyful and full of dressing, I mean blessings. Respectfully submitted. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Phil. Great report. Uh, counsel, any questions or comments for, like, commander? All right. Thank you, commander. Appreciate it. All right. Next up, we have the administrative services staff report. Mr. Peter Voice will be presenting. Peter.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. Uh, I'm going to keep this quick and, you know, after, it's hard to follow that report and you'll see why I'm not emceeing events.
Right.
It's kind of like when you're watching the news, the sports report and the weather report.
Wait, wait, what did you say?
It's kind of like watching the news, the sports report, the weather report. But the weather, but the weather report is important.
Yeah.
All right. So let's get to that important report. Okay. So, uh, so first a report on the sales tax dispersment for the month of October. Came in, came in at sixty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight. Uh, so we're still on track with what we, uh, uh, had guessed we would, uh, receive for the year. So that's good. Uh, quick update on the twenty twenty-six budget. As you know, on the agenda this evening, uh, we have two ordinances, one to adopt the property tax, uh, the second to adopt the final budget. Uh, so we're looking for city council to take some action tonight, but I wanted to remind everyone how we got here. Uh, you know, we got the preliminary budget delivered to city council back on October sixth. Uh, budget presentations were made to city council on the October twenty-second, November twelfth. Uh, two public hearings on the budget were held on November twelfth, uh, regarding the property tax and the preliminary budget. Uh, and this evening, uh, we'll be holding a public hearing. Uh, you know, we, we do every, every time when we, when we adopt an ordinance. So we'll be having another public hearing regarding the property tax, even though we had it last week also. And, uh, prior to the final budget ordinance. Uh, so that is this evening and, um, wanted to make sure I thanked everyone who worked on the budget. So, so hard, everyone from mayor, council, the budget committee, uh, Mr. Riley, um, and, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into it in staff. Uh, so thank you for that. Uh, gambling tax numbers. So for the month of October, uh, the receipts came in at one hundred twenty-seven thousand, three hundred twenty-seven dollars. Uh, so, you know, again, it was a pretty good month for gambling tax. And we're on track with where we thought we'd be, uh, previously. Uh, other information, the mayor hit on a couple of these things, but I wanted to remind everyone about the Association of Washington City Scholarship Application for graduating seniors. Uh, you know, please, uh, contact the city if you have anyone who's interested in, in applying. Uh, Hannah, uh, can fill you in with all the information. Uh, but, you know, it's, it's, it's a great program and you can get some, some money for, uh, for college. Uh, the second installment of the center university, uh, is going to begin on Monday, January fifth. Uh, Hannah also has information on that, anyone who's interested. Um, so we encourage the public to sign up and, 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 uh, go through those classes and get educated on how cities function. Um, yeah, so, uh, and then the mayor talked about the Christmas festival and, and, uh, whatnot. So that is my report for this evening.
Kind of took that wind from your sails too. Sorry, Pete.
No, it's all good.
Thank you, Pete. Any questions for Pete? Comments?
I looked up, uh, Pete, I looked up that, uh, RCW eighty-four dot fifty-five dot one two zero and read through that because some taxes that are collected, the county gets their portion first and then us. And I wanted to make sure, are, is the city going to get that?
So with regard to the property tax, yes, the, the city will.
The city would get all of that.
Yes.
That's what I thought from reading it, but I don't always understand legally. So I wanted to make sure of that.
Yeah, there, you know, I, I've seen some other, uh, ballot measures that, that, you know, provide money for police departments and things like that. And sometimes the county gets a cut of those, but property tax, uh, the county has their own property tax they, they issue. So the city's portion that we'll adopt tonight is.
So is this, so is this the same tax that in the legislature this last year, they tried to raise the cap to three percent and for twenty years it's been one percent?
Right. So that, that is correct. We're in the ordinance this evening. It's, it's set for one percent increase. Uh, so, uh, but yeah, it's the same tax that we're discussing.
Yeah. Cause that, it didn't pass. They were pushing for that, but it didn't pass.
Right, right. So the statutory limit is one percent is what the city can increase.
They had a lot of money that was shortfall for the state. So they were trying to come up with the other ideas to help. Yeah.
Now they just want to do an income tax.
Any other questions for Pete? Comments? Thank you, Pete. All right. Well, you're not going anywhere because you're up next. We do have a couple ordinances tonight. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, the ad valorem property taxes. Mr. Peter Voice will be presenting. Peter.
Right. So we went over, uh, this last week, so I'm not going to, um, delve into it too much. Uh, just a reminder that the ordinance is written to receive the one percent increase. Um, that one percent increase totals seven thousand five hundred forty-nine dollars. Uh, so that's the, the result of the one percent increase. Uh, there's also new construction, uh, revenue that would come to the city independent of the ordinance. And that's forty-one thousand, five hundred ninety-six dollars. That's for new development within city limits. Uh, and I wanted to also reiterate that, like we said last week, the, uh, the levy rate, uh, came in at zero point seven six six, uh, for a thousand of assessed value. Uh, the twenty twenty-five rate, that's lower than the twenty twenty-five rate that was zero point seven eight six. So a little bit less than, than last year on the rate.
Okay. Counsel, we did, uh, discuss this, uh, pretty in-depth last meeting, which was just last Wednesday. You have any questions or comments? So you want to have a conversation amongst each, each other before I open up to public hearing?
I do have a question. Is with our known growth at this point for, for this year, how much of an increase will there be over that seventy-five hundred if we, if we do pass this?
I, I don't have an answer to that, that question. I'd have to research that.
Okay.
Uh, how would you even research that?
We know the new construction comes in at forty-one thousand, five hundred ninety-six dollars.
It's on assessed value though, right? It's on assessed value. So, yeah. So that's going to be all over the place.
So, uh, it looks like the assessed value of new construction in twenty twenty-five was about fifty, close to fifty-three million. Uh, and that got us about forty-one, forty-two thousand dollars in property tax. Of course, there's all sorts of construction that's happening. Uh, but when we look at our construction estimates as far as impact fees, right? We kind of look at single family homes, uh, single family residences as being the primary driver of that. And we were estimating about ninety homes to be built next year. Uh, and we were looking at about ninety homes that were built this year. Uh, so if that trend continues, uh, every house that's built next year costs exactly as much as the one that was built this year. Uh, that would be about, you know, another fifty-three million dollars in new construction, uh, for next year. So then that would be another whatever forty-two, forty-three thousand dollars, uh, in. in property taxes that we'd be getting in the year after that. So that's the primary driver of our property tax. Our property tax increases as in not a increase in the rate, but an increase in the total amount that we receive on a year-to-year basis.
Okay, that actually answers, that's a better question that I should have asked, but thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I guess one other thing I will add, because nobody asked me this year, and I've been asked like every year in the past, so I had it ready. If you had a five-hundred-thousand-dollar house, the, this one percent increase would be about a three or four dollar change in your property tax bill.
Thank you. Yeah, I was gonna, yeah, I was just, yeah. Obviously, at seven thousand, five hundred, yeah, it has to be, so it seems like a.
Thank you, Riley. Any questions? All right, the time is seven, it's different on my computer to that. The time is seven thirteen. I'd like to open up to public comment. If you'd like to step up and make a comment, please do so, please keep it to the ordinance 2025 dash fourteen. Any public comments?
Al Phillips, 36016, Northwest City Bridge Road. Okay, if I understood what the mayor just said, I cannot tell you that Salvation Army building starts in Thanksgiving. And then I'll deal with Fred Myers, you know, between eight and about two. And on Black Friday, north, I tell you that the following Mondays, I'll be in Fred Myers' campground, eight to two.
How do I even cut that? I can't even cut that. That would make me out to be like Scrooge over here, you know? That was, well, well done, sir.
But again, you know, ten years ago, I sat right here, and the city council said, yeah, we'll just, you know, we won't collect that one percent. We won't collect that seventy-five hundred dollars. Well, that was seventy-five hundred dollars that year, and every year after that, for ten years, and how much does that come to? I went to school at the center, so Riley can do the math, seventy-five thousand dollars. You know, so go ahead, don't pass it in ten years now when you're broke. Thank you, God bless America.
Thank you, Al. Kimberly?
I've been doing this for like five years. I look on the agenda, I look it over, I look it online and read it. If I want to speak on it or not, I'll print it off, and so of course I printed off today's agenda, and I brought this up quite a few months ago. Two point eight reads ordinances, resolutions, and public hearings. For me, I'm thinking two point eight, or excuse me, two point eight point one and two read as ordinances. It doesn't mention that it's a public hearing, and for transparency and for people like me that look at these, had I seen that it said public hearing, I would have studied it quite a bit more. And, and so I'm going to ask the, the council to change this, have the clerk change. When it's an ordinance, it's an ordinance. If it's a resolution, it's a resolution, and if it's a public hearing, put down it's a public hearing tonight. That's very important, especially if, you know, if I want to speak, so, and then I know what I'm talking about. As far as taxes, I think if ours go up one percent, if I'm not mistaken, and I listened to all the Clark County Council meetings, I think they're going to tax us, just to let you know. We want our harder tax dollars to go to what it's supposed to go to, so let's just keep track, and hold everybody accountable, and God is always good. Amen.
Thank you, Kimberly. And I will take that into account. Staff, if we can please put on these ordinance resolutions and public hearings that, that there is a public speaking part in it, I would appreciate it as well. Any other comments?
Dennis Hill, thirteen sixteen, West Alder Place. A couple weeks ago, we had public hearing, and I spoke up regarding this. Wasn't, I was not against this tax, but one of the things I did ask the council to consider doing, because we are asking the for more money to come out of our citizens' bank account, that there would be some kind of a, at least a short presentation, bulletproof, some bullets that indicated the pros and cons of why the, the council is determining that they want to go forward with this versus not going forward with it. I just think that would be, you, you, the council probably has had discussions within themselves, but hearing that, reasons why the council wants to go forward with this, and for us to see that on a, on a presentation, I think this helps us all understand where the council is coming from and why you're deciding or determining that this is a good thing to do at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other public comments? Please step up to the mic, state your name and address for the record. Okay, any callers calling in, please press star six to unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record, please stick with Ordinance 2025 dash fourteen. Clerk, are there any public comments to be read?
No public comments to be read.
Seeing as there's no public comments to be read, or anybody speaking or stepping up to the microphone, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at seven eighteen PM and turn it back over to counsel.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes.
I had one item. In the recommended motion, there was a typo. You can see the last full line, it talks about for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, that should be twenty twenty-six.
Oh, yeah, that's pretty important, yeah. We have Beth and Janine here, so I'm sure one of them would have caught it right away too. All right. Counsel, any further conversation?
Well, every time I hear anything about taxes raising, I cringe. Because I don't want, you know, the citizens don't want it, I don't want it either, but looking at this and, and the small amount that it is, and, and this is money, one of the reasons we need it is just inflation. You know, so how do you keep up with inflation if you don't collect this, and even like Al said, if you go several years without collecting, you're really behind. So I just, I, after I read through this and thought about it, I was more in favor of doing it, even though I just cringe at the sound of taxes.
Yeah, agreed.
I'd rather have a slow increase over time than one big lump sum, you know, being requested. I mean, the federal government does it all the time, at least, well, in my tax world, but, you know, here's, here's a lump sum, and that's more difficult for people. I think doing it slowly over time is, and it, this increments is so small, but it's a big impact for the city overall, very little impact, in my opinion, to the citizens. But it's keeping up with time and taking care of the fund. It'd be different if we didn't do it for three years, and then we were allowed to do three percent. That'd be a little different if we deferred it, but you can't do that, so I think it's important that we take what we can when we can, and in a way that's not, like, really hurting the bottom line of everybody, and I'm sure that there's, is there subsidy programs?
For property tax, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, for senior citizens and people on, yeah, exactly, so, I mean.
In fact, they have open houses, and I, we have one here
Yeah.
this year already, right, and we have it in like April?
Yeah.
Something like that, yeah.
You have to apply and all of that.
Yeah.
Exactly, so. It's good.
All right. Any other conversation? Okay. If there's no other conversation, I would entertain a motion.
I recommend, Mayor, I move to approve Ordinance 2026 dash fourteen, establishing the add valarium taxes necessary to finance the anticipated requirements of the City of La Center, Washington, for the fiscal year ending in December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six, by increasing property taxes revenue from the previous year by one percent.
Before I go any further, on a second on that, the ordinance is 2025 dash fourteen. Her statement, the 2026 dash fourteen, is that acceptable?
I thought that's what you wanted to change.
It's our numbering system for this current year we're in.
Okay, I just wanted to verify that one, because you talked about the ending in December thirty-first, not the ordinance number. Okay.
Oh, I thought it was the.
You, you're fine.
Okay.
Did everything fine?
Do we need to amend the motion then?
Nope, we need a second.
Okay. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk, this is an ordinance. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Counsel member Fox, yes. Counsel member Casper?
Yes.
Counsel member Boyle?
Yes.
Counsel member Leah?
Yes.
Counsel member Serbin?
Yes.
All right, ordinance passes. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, everyone, for your input. Appreciate it. All right, we do have the big one, Ordinance 2025. Should that be 2026 then, dash eleven?
Twenty twenty-five.
Okay, twenty twenty-five dash eleven, the 2026 budget, final budget, presenting as Peter, Mr. Peter Vois, and his sidekick over there, Riley. Mike is yours, gentlemen.
So, again, we had discussion about the budget. We had a public hearing last week. Statute requires another public hearing prior to the final adoption, and so that's what we'll be doing this evening. Last week, we did talk about one small change that we were going to implement, which we did. We added thirty-two hundred dollars from hotel tax, lodging tax, that we've received over the years. So that's in an expenditure line item in the finance budget. We will be working with our legal representation to determine if we can take applications after the budget is adopted in order to use those funds, which could be used for things such as marketing some of our events to bring tourism into the City of La Center. So if we're unable to do that, the expense, the expenditure appropriation will just sit there and not be touched, will build for the following year, and then the following year, we can get our ducks in a row to make sure we have an advertised application process of groups that are holding events in the city can advertise and use the money for its intended purpose. So with that, that is the only change. We had a pretty long conversation about the budget last week, so I don't want to reiterate too much, but if any council members have any questions, I'd sure like to answer those for you.
Thank you, Peter. Riley, do you have anything you want to add to that? Not yet? All right. Counsel, do you have any comments or questions for Peter or Riley? No? Kind of know where we're at with this, right? Yeah, all right. So if there's no further comments or conversation between counsel, I'm going to open up this to public hearing at seven twenty-five PM. If there are any members of the audience that would like to step up for a public comment, please do so at this time. Please stick to the Ordinance 2025 dash eleven. State your name and address for the record.
Al Phillips, 36016, Northwest City Bridge Road. Okay, so we have to stick to the ordinance, so I cannot tell you there's an open mic on Wednesday night, I mean, six to eight at the Pope Don Pizza Place, you know, that's like tonight and Wednesday, and then, but so the next several Wednesdays, I expect to see somebody there, but I can't tell you about that because it doesn't stick to the ordinance. Thank you, God bless America.
God bless America, I lost that bet.
Yeah.
Whoa!
I was just, I already wrote that down, I'm like, it's coming, it's coming.
It's, it's coming.
That's hilarious.
We have, yeah, I lost.
I was about to write it, just because I was waiting.
Thank you, Al. Kimberly?
Goheen Elvin. So thankfully, the mayor is going to change this for transparency, actually, and I really definitely appreciate that, because had he not, I, I would pull a big stink here. You know, when we have an official council meeting doing the people's work, we want to have transparency, and again, I'm very familiar with agendas, and this was not transparent. I, I really, the only thing I want to say is on the, and so then therefore I would have asked them to carry it over so that I could study it. Maybe somebody else would study it too, right? Not, so I'm not feeling one. I am going to question the indigent payments that we pay again. I am somehow reaching out for the life and welfare of my son, Cleve Goheen Rango. He is there. We believe being held illegally and definitely unconstitutionally, but in a broken system, the poor don't have much to say, and they, I can't hire an attorney for him or anything like that. However, we know that greater is he that is in me and in him than that is in the world, and so we suffer, but we know that he will come out and be a productive citizen here in Clark County. And so I, I will ask for prayer for my son, Cleve Goheen Rango, and that the indigent help will help him, and they're not, but we're working on it, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? You guys are awful quiet tonight. All right. Any callers calling in, please press star six to unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record, please stick to Ordinance 2025 dash eleven.
No callers with comments.
All right. Any comments to be read, clerk?
No comments to be read.
Hey. If there are no further comments from the audience, callers, or written, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at seven twenty-nine PM and turn this back over to counsel. Counsel, any conversation amongst each other, or any further questions for Peter or Riley? Okay, if not, then I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve Ordinance 2025 dash eleven, adopting the final budget for the City of La Center, Washington, for the 2026 fiscal year.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk, this is an ordinance. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Counsel member Fox? Yes. Counsel member Casper?
Yes.
Counsel member Boyle?
Yes.
Counsel member Leah?
Yes.
Counsel member Serbin?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. We do appreciate it. Counsel, is there any unfinished business that we need to discuss? About any new business? Okay, that, that takes us to two point one two, an executive session. This is the executive sessions to discuss possible litigation underneath RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero. We will now enter into an executive session, and I would say this executive session will be for fifteen minutes, after which we will be coming out. There will be no further action from the council or anything like that. Okay? All right. Thank you. Beth, you ready? Janine will be calling, calling you?
7:49, unlike two, we have exited the executive session tonight. There is no further action. At this point, I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded and third. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Thank you, council. Thank you, everyone, for attending. It was a great night.
It's Skip's fault.
Yeah.